And I was like, well, she's known you since you were in my belly.
That's right.
Right?
And you were still shocked about how I made you laugh.
I know. And I was like, you can keep them. I think I walked away. I was like, here, just hold them for a while.
And we were with the inside.
Yeah, it's like.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting of Thursday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty five. This meeting is open to the public and is being conducted in a hybrid format where participation by committee members may be remote and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. As we open the meeting tonight, we do not have any voting members who are participating remotely at this time, but we anticipate we will have one later and we'll just read that into the minutes when we get back. Okay, great. So voting members are all present in person in the Simmons Lecture Hall. We will have public comment. It runs towards the end of our agenda. So at that time, any members of the public who wish to make comments will be invited to do so. Please be prepared to share your name and address at the time. And public comments will be limited to three minutes per person. We'll get into other details later if there are folks who would wish to make comments. So with that, we'll move to the first item on the agenda, which is I am making a motion to go into executive session to return to open session. This is pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty eight, subsection twenty one A three, to discuss strategies with respect for collective bargaining for grievance for Unit A and pursuit to MGL Chapter thirty eight, subsection twenty one A two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for collective bargaining with the Easton Educators Association grievance hearing as well. In my opinion, having this discussion in open meeting would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Persio, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
No, exact session you always have to.
Yep.
That's okay.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Persio, yes.
Okay, all right, great. So with that, we'll adjourn to executive session and return as soon as we can.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you, have you connected to Zoom so that we can confirm Jackie?
I can, I can do that right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jackie, if you're connected, can you hear us?
She might just need to be moved over for a moment.
Okay. And Marvel may be joining remotely.
Oh, okay.
Recording in progress.
Sorry. I'm with Sue. Jackie. Okay. Okay, all right, so they're not on yet? All right, so if they join and you move Jackie over, just let me know, we'll... And is Lynn on?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, all right, perfect, all right. So next up on the agenda, welcome back everybody, are some personnel changes. We have some retirements this evening. So, Dr. Cabral, do you want to start with the first one, which is the Blanche Ames School Nurse?
Sure. Marie Hassan is a, well, she's currently at Blanche Ames. She began her career in the public schools in September of 2004 as a part-time nurse in Moreau Hall. In 2006, shortly thereafter, she was changed to full-time. She received her professional teaching status and she has been at Blanche Ames ever since it opened. She will be retiring effective June 30th after 21 years in the district.
Okay, great, I'll read her letter. Dear Dr. Cabral, I am writing to inform you that I am retiring from my position as a school nurse at Blanche Ames Elementary School. My last day of work will be June 30th, 2025. It has been an honor to serve as a school nurse at Moreau Hall Elementary School and currently at Blanche Ames Elementary School over the past 21 years. I've had the opportunity to work with incredible students, staff, and parents. I am grateful for the support and guidance I have received during my time as a school nurse in Easton. While I am excited about retiring, this decision has been bittersweet as I will deeply miss my colleagues and the wonderful relationships I have built with students and families over the years. I will cherish the memories and experiences I have gained as a school nurse. I would like to take this opportunity to express my sincere gratitude to my nurse colleagues for their continuous support and collaboration. It has been a pleasure working with such a dedicated and passionate team. Thank you again for the amazing opportunities and support given to me during my time at Moreau Hall and Blanche Ames. I wish all current and former colleagues, students, and families good health and happiness. Right, and I apologize, I know I usually have my comments, say my comments before you read the letter. So, I apologize. Marie Hassan is a wonderful colleague. As you can imagine, the position of nurse can be very complex. In the last 21 years, the presentation medically of students has gotten much more complex. The students who need diabetic supervision at the PK to II level is very intense. Medically fragile children and just in general, the nurse's office is a place where things manifest as a tummy ache or feeling like they have a headache and it can be social emotional issues. So, a lot goes on in the office. She will be greatly missed and really wish her well in her retirement. Unfortunately, she's unable to be here this evening, but we certainly congratulate her on her next phase. Any comments from school committee members?
Sure. She's my neighbor and she's a wonderful neighbor and a wonderful person. She was a treasurer at Moreau Hall. I'd go up there for whatever nieces, whoever was up there. And she just, because her office was right when you walked in, so she was always a, she was kind of like a greeter. She was great. She could get a nice job at Walmart. And, you know, she just, just has that personality. And the kids loved her, oh my gosh, they love her so much. And you're gonna love retirement, it's the best.
I'll just add in, my son had her as his school nurse at Moreau and he had, he was one of the children with lots of food allergies and things that we had to be concerned about. And she had it covered. And once we met her and she had it organized for every field trip, every school event, we, she kept his frozen snacks in the office. And so that when, back when we used to do cupcakes, he had a special treat that he could eat instead. And it was, she was on top of it all the time and felt so safe and secure that she was the one watching over him. So, greatly appreciate all that she did.
Anyone else? Can I just say?
Yes, of course, of course, always.
I'm sorry, I just wish Marie the best of, best wishes in retirement. She has just such a gentle way with the students and just watching her as she calms a student down, especially at that age level, is just remarkable. She will be greatly missed. I was able to work with her closely during COVID and, you know, and mainly through COVID, but also, you know, in other instances. And she's just a remarkable person and we'll definitely miss her.
So, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Marie Hassan with regret?
So, move to Luca.
Can I get a second? Roll call, oh, is Jackie on? I don't see her. No, okay. All in favor? All right, and next one?
Susan Soussal. I am happy to let you know that she is able to attend this evening and she's in the audience. She is a special education at Blanche Ames, began her career in September of 2002 at the Parkview School. Throughout the years, she served as a mentor, actually many positions. In terms of my commentary, I've always found her to be extremely generous with her time in terms of mentoring other staff members, providing professional development for other staff members. I worked with her on the report card committee many years ago. These are all things very much in addition to the regular demands of the job, which are a lot. I am happy that she is going to be spending time with her family, but like I say, all lot here. We lose more of our valued people and a lot of experience goes out those doors for grandchildren than anything else. But there is no better reason. And while it is bittersweet because it is, it is sad for us and certainly for our students, we can't help but be excited for Susan and wish her very well in this well-deserved retirement. Lots of health and happiness for many, many years with those kiddos and your mom.
Before I read the letter, would you like to say anything? You're welcome to, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to come up or we can, do you have an extra mic?
Oh, there's one there on the end of the table.
Right there?
Yeah.
Make sure that a green light is on, on the microphone.
Oh, Sue, there's one on there too, right at the end of the table.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, wherever you want, yeah, wherever you're comfortable. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're here, so I would love to give you the chance to... Oh, great, okay, great.
You're welcome to stand at the podium if you're more comfortable, it's up to you.
You'll be seen on camera.
Okay. Thank you for your kind words. It's been privileged to work here. The relationships I've built with the students, their families, my colleagues, but most importantly, the paraprofessionals that I've worked with, who I couldn't do what's been done over the years with our students without them. Their instincts and support and flexibility with the scheduling that passes and cuts and changes. I do want to shout out to the paraprofessionals who I've worked with over my time here. The first one was Lucky McLean, McLean, so some people may remember her. The late grade Catholicist for over 10 years. Mrs. Burton, who always has the greatest instincts and relationships with the students. Mrs. Burton, who always has the greatest instincts and relationships with the students. Also had Trish Gilson working with me, and right now, Raffaels Darnaki. So I just really appreciate being able to have the parents with me and to support the students who learn differently. And I appreciate all the opportunities that I've had here in Easton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I will read her letter, and then any comments from the committee before we vote? Which have we ever voted to not approve of retirement?
I'm tempted right now, but I don't think we have yet.
And I loved your letter. It's really beautiful. Dear Dr. Cabral, every child is gifted. They just unwrap their packages at different times. As a learning specialist in Easton, I've seen the growth my students have achieved in all academic areas. Over my 30 years of teaching students who learn differently, 24 years in Easton, I've used my ever-growing toolbox of strategies, materials, and methods to reach and teach every student. I have been blessed to work alongside some of the most gifted inclusion teachers, as they have been open to trying new approaches, accommodations, and modifications for our students. Over my tenure, I was honored to have the opportunity to share my knowledge through presentations to our staff about topics that are most important to me: motivating the unmotivated, everyday math for everybody. Tillian, am I mispronouncing that?
Tillian.
Tillian. Italian slash sight words you can see, and a presentation on Ehrlich syndrome using colored overlays to aid in reading are some of the presentations of which I am most proud.
Serving on many committees such as the D cap, report card, and school council, mentoring new teachers, and being a mentor support group facilitator allowed me to share my years of experience and knowledge in the field of teaching. I also was able to share my expertise with student teachers who embarked on teaching careers of their own in special education. Being an EEA representative throughout my career in Easton allowed me to stay in the loop while attempting to affect change respectfully. It has been a long, wonderful journey that is simply called teaching, but it has been more than that to me. To touch the lives of so many students with various disabilities and needs has been so very rewarding. It is time for me to spend time with my own littles, my five grandchildren, and my oldster, my 94-year-old mother. Please accept this notice of my intent to retire at the end of the school year in June of 2025. Thanks for the memories. Respectfully yours, Susan Saul.
Any comments from committee members?
Sure. Sue, we worked together on the EEA way back, and also, just she... You're a key person in the education of our special ed kids. You're kind of that professional professional, and it's just been a real pleasure to know you and work with you. And you are gonna love retirement.
Any other comments from committee members?
This one's sad for me. So you worked with...
You can do it.
When he was in second grade, he was in Capo Bianco's room. And he loved working with you so much.
It's her baby.
I know. And I love the support you gave me. I didn't know if he needed extra help or if he didn't, and you were... The love and support you give to kids and their families is amazing. And so you will be missed, and I appreciate you so much, and I wish you the best of luck and enjoy those beautiful babies. I remember when you just had one, when the first one was born. So enjoy retirement, you'll love it, you'll miss. I hope to see you around.
I'll say, I don't know... I don't know if you work directly with... You said nice thing. I don't know if you worked directly with one of my kids who sort of... It was a long time ago, back before we had the intervention structure that we have in place that's more formal now, or it has been for, you know, 10-ish years. But back 100 years ago, one of my kids was at one of the lower elementary schools and definitely needed help, and the Ehrlich syndrome popped out of me, because I do remember back then, sitting in some meetings and wasn't on an IEP yet, and wasn't on a 504, but I remember hearing, "Oh, we have somebody in the district who really knows about this." And so, and it was such a... Just that one thing, just you having that knowledge, your colleagues knowing you have that knowledge, and somebody applying that to my child who was struggling like heck to be able to read made such a difference for him. So I'm very, very grateful for even... I know. For even the students you didn't work directly with benefited from your research and your leadership and your ability to bring things to the district that maybe weren't really well-established back in the time. So yes, and I am for clumsy. We're all a hot mess. But anyway, I wish you well in retirement, and just really am very grateful. Your work has had a very long reach, so really, really appreciate it, and wish you well in retirement, and so...
Okay.
All right, with that...
Oh, boy.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm sorry. I know you keep saying committee members, I'm like, I'm not a committee member, but I just want to...
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Because I was... You know, I've had the fortune of working with... I've been fortunate to work with Sue. And, you know, up until most recently at our PD committee meeting, as we're planning PD, she's always saying, "Don't forget about the sped teachers, don't forget about the sped teachers." And, you know, having you always remind us of the importance of the positions. I mean, we know, of course, but you always brought forward, you know, the work, the passion that you had in your work towards making sure that everyone that was in the position similar to yours were also made sure that they weren't left out, and you have been invaluable. You really will be missed a lot, and I know that, to me, those commentaries mean a lot more, because you affected their children, but you've affected the way I look at things professionally, and I really appreciate you. And just have a great time in retirement, and please come back and visit.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
So would somebody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Susan Stahl with regret? Susan Saul, I'm sorry.
So move to this.
And can I get a second? Person who has a second? Roll call vote? Oh, no, we don't need to roll. Sorry. We're all off tonight. Okay, all in favor? All righty. And this one's gonna make me reclined too. So go ahead, Dr. Cabral.
I'm with you.
Patricia Gay. Pat unfortunately is unable to be here tonight. However, Pat is a grade three teacher at RO. She will retire also June 30th. She's worked in Easton since 1993, first as a teaching assistant for Project Early, then she was a resource room aide, substitute teacher for grade three, and then she was appointed to grade three at Moreau Hall, then what was FL Olmsted, and now she's been at Richardson Olmsted since 2000. She... Now, I just want to point out, she had those positions later in her life and decided that she wanted to get her degree and got her master's degree. And this is also before... We have some programs now for people to help them, whether it's a paraprofessional or someone working part-time, to help them get their teaching degree. Those were not in place back then. And she worked toward getting her degree, got her teaching license, and has been in grade three here ever since. We are very fortunate to have gotten her... That's our goal, right? Is to have people who are in our system and encourage them to have the position they want, whether it is to be an interventionist, paraprofessional, or to move to a teacher licensure. And she did that progression, and that's not easy to do, especially while you're working. It's also a little less common to be in one grade all the time if you're a grade one through six teacher. Sometimes it's just not being lucky, because the least senior teacher usually gets moved around as grade levels shift and different sections are needed elsewhere. So just having that, many years of experience in that one grade level, again, that's a lot of experience walking out the door. She also, as a person, another great colleague who is just very kind, she has a wit and a humor that is very much appreciated. She's always got a kind smile for you and works really well and is very nurturing to those young little eight-year-olds. So again, very happy for her, more than deserving of this time for her, for her family. We are sad to see her go. Thank you, Pat, very much for your many years of service in Easton. We appreciate you.
I will read her letter.
Dear Dr. Cabral, as you may or may not know, I entered the teaching profession later in life. It was not until my youngest son graduated high school that I pursued thoughts of a teaching career. I was already familiar with the Easton schools, having worked as a paraprofessional in both the early Project Early Preschool and Special Education Programs here. I also did a little substitute teaching in Easton. During this time, I pursued a Master of Science degree in education while looking forward to a full-time teaching position. In 2000, I was thrilled to accept such a position as a teacher in a third-grade classroom at Moreau Hall. I have happily remained teaching in Easton and in third-grade classrooms ever since. As you can see, I'm not much for change. Given my late start in this career, I always joke that I'd be teaching until I'm 80. Well, as it turns out, that prediction was not quite true. It seems early retirement, before I'm 80, is now in my future. As such, I respectfully submit my intent to retire as of June 30th, 2025. I am deeply grateful for all of my... For all of the years of support from administration, school committee members, parents, and of course, my fantastic colleagues and students, both past and present. I could not have wished for a more wonderful place to spend my teaching career. This decision was not an easy one for me. Did I mention that I'm not much for change? It was made especially hard because I truly love being in the classroom with my students. However, I do look forward to more time with family, extra chances for beach walks and main adventures, and exploring whatever the next chapter may bring. I will always treasure my years of teaching in Easton. I am grateful for the time spent in a wonderful school system and with amazing staff and students. They have greatly enriched my life. With thanks and very best wishes, Pat Gay.
Okay. Any comments from school committee members?
Did you want to go first?
No, I don't have to go first.
So I've known Pat a long time, and she is a wonderful teacher for sure. Her students absolutely love her. I don't know, you know, they're in... When they were at Moreau Hall, and you know, you're in second grade and you're ready to go to third, and they're, you know, kind of picking out their teachers and stuff. And she wasn't always the one that would be picked, but once the kiddos got in there, they were like, "This is great." So she's awesome, and she will be missed. And Pat, you're gonna love retirement.
Okay, so Lauren, I know you want to say something. Kelly, do you want to?
Can I go before Lauren? Because I feel like you're...
Yes. Go ahead.
She has her mic on though. It needs to be on, Lauren.
It's on.
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to say that, you know, in the recent years, we have had the opportunity to go in and observe in Pat's room through our CHAMP's Professional Development Program with No Adam, our science program, and I swear she has pixie dust that she sprinkles over the kids, and they are all just attentive and, you know, ready to go, and it's... And the way that she interacts with them is just with such high respect, and she has a calm about her. Going into her room is just... It's just such a wonderful atmosphere that any child would thrive in, and it's... When I actually heard that she was retiring, I thought to myself, "I knew it was coming, but what a loss it will be for us." But I'm extremely happy for her. So thank you, Pat, for all your years.
I'll go, and then you? Let you close out?
Okay.
Okay. I can go.
So, yeah, so Mrs. Gay, actually, I think she's one of... I think she might be the only, like, K to six teacher who taught more than one of my kids, and they are wildly different people, and she was awesome for both of them. But especially one who is the kind of kid who would be a lot, a lot. We'll say a lot, right? And so you're used to, you know, coming... I remember going to the first parent-teacher conference, just thinking like, "Oh, what am I gonna hear now?" She was... Loved him. Genuinely loved the spunk, loved the spirit, no issues, incredibly calm, just, "No, it's all good." Everything... I was like, it was such a relief and such a change to see somebody who didn't look at my kid and focus on, "Yeah, we gotta work on this, we gotta work on that." It was more like, "Don't worry about that, and here's what I really, really love." And, you know, was able to really focus on some positives, and it just... It was just made a huge difference for him, for me. It just made school a much better experience at a point when it needed to be. You know what I mean? You know, so it was really, really great. And then, you know, other kid, completely different kid, and also a really wonderful match. So her ability to adapt to any kid who walked through that door and make them realize that they were liked just the way they were, and however they showed up was just fine. So I will for always, and, you know, forever and always appreciate that. It really made a big, big difference for both of my kids.
Lauren?
Okay, so I'm not gonna cry. So Hudson had Mrs. Gay in third grade, and this was the first year that parents were allowed back in the classroom to volunteer. So I jumped on it and was in her classroom every week, and I helped with centers. And then I would, when... After the centers were over, they would go into the corner, and as Chrissy was saying, she felt like that she is pixie dust, and so I was, you know, sprinkled with pixie dust, because I would just sit there and just thought to myself, "Oh, I think I've overstayed my welcome," but it's okay. And I just thought she was such... She's such a great teacher, and her calm demeanor is just... She's so warm and such a... Like, everyone is just constantly learning, and you don't even realize that you are learning. So she... So I appreciate everything that you've done for my family, and I wish you the best of luck in retirement, and like Nancy says, you'll love it, and you will be missed.
Excellent. Okay, all right. So would somebody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Pat Gay with regret? Can I get a second? Person who has a second? Roll call? Oh, all in favor? All right. Next up, vote to approve banner sponsors. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. At your last school committee meeting, there were some banner sponsors presented to you for approval. One of them was called Primary Colors, and the committee requested to know what kind of business it was. The athletic director has been able to confirm that it is a photography company. Yeah, it's a photographer. And I don't know... Is Maria Palma present virtually? Okay. She is going to be attending to Present Healthy Smiles as a sponsor and offer more information, because this one is specific to the request about OA senior parent sponsors that had been brought to your attention, and so Ms. Palma will offer some more information about that.
She's moved to a panelist.
Okay. All right. Can you hear us? Whenever you're ready, Ms. Palma.
Hi. Yes. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. So here I am again, on behalf of the class of 2025, and it's now 2025. Only five months away, so we are working really hard. We had a great fall, we had an amazing holiday where we won the holiday competition, and we're just... We're having a great time together. And so we are still working on, yes, accumulating some banner sponsors to create this great banner and just have it as a great tribute to everybody who supported us along the way. So we did have some in the fall that we got those... The approval... So we did have some in the fall that we got the approval for, and, you know, very grateful for that. We had a new one come through that had not been on the list before. It is Healthy Smiles Dentistry, which is based in West Bridgewater. And the practitioners there are actually parents of one of our seniors. They're a very supportive family, probably one of the first people to respond and express interest in supporting our banner. So yes, we would respectfully request permission to add them to the sponsor list and, you know, love to accept their gifts to us.
I know we, I know we have, we have to vote on the two, the two that were added. So they're added to a big, an overall list, so it'll be the two here. And I don't think that'll be controversial. But I know at the last meeting, we had discussed, there was, had been a question about parent sponsors. And I know committee members have had some questions about that. So might this be a good opportunity to ask Ms. Palma while she's here for maybe some more information on that? So I don't know if you want to, you know, if you want to maybe give some background on where the request came from or what you would envision this would look like if we were to approve parent as sponsors? And so, yeah, just take it away.
Sure. Yeah, we had talked about it. So I had advertised it on one of the, I think maybe the Class of 2025 page, and one of the parents said, oh, could be. And we said that, you know, we would like to, and, you know, we would request permission through school committee and, you know, then have that become another option for the banner to have family sponsors. So that it would read, you know, in addition to the businesses, it would read the, and then, you know, the name of the family, family, and then join the list of business sponsors on the banner.
I think, if I remember correctly, the school committee questions were about how big will it be? Where will it be for how long?
Yeah, the banner itself, yeah.
And is it a message?
Yeah, we were under the impression that it was gonna have a message, and we didn't understand how that was gonna lay out.
Like, good luck, child's message.
Right. Yeah, we haven't put together that slogan yet, but that's definitely something. We just talked to the officers the other day about getting back on track about organizing this banner and, you know, finalizing our list of sponsors and then coming up with the, all of the looks of it. My coadviser, Kristen Shea, the, you know, Art Department Chair extraordinaire, she will be really helpful with the layout of that and the design of it. So that is something that we are still working on, but it will be, we're planning on hanging it at graduation. We're also hoping during senior week to hang it in the atrium there where they have their final countdown for the last day of classes. And so just different locations where they're gonna be congregated together. But definitely at graduations, we want the community to see, you know, the sponsors who have helped us out and really shout them out.
And each family will, it would just be their family name? And it'll all be the same weight for each family? It won't be, if you pay more money, you have a bigger font or?
No, no, I think we would just work it as a standard size for each business or family that contributed.
Okay, so it would just be mixed in? So a family name would be treated the same as a logo for a business?
That's what we're envisioning, yeah.
Scaled the same? Okay. All right. Any other questions around that? Do we, do we want to add? Because, you know, the voting item here is banner sponsors. So do we want to maybe, are we comfortable answering that, that kind of outstanding question now that a family, you know, a family is an acceptable sponsor for the class banner?
I'm just curious, how much is it to have your family's name on the banner?
Oh, we had given a suggested amount of $100, but we were not saying that there was a minimum or that they had to make a certain amount. Really, whatever people would be.
So no matter how much you give, you have equal weight on the banner?
Yeah, I think that's what we're, the direction we're going in with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on that? Then you're okay?
Yep.
Okay.
So just to Kelly's question, there will be a general message at the top, congratulations, graduates, and then just a list of names and businesses?
Yeah, probably something like a smaller line of thank you to our sponsors and then, you know, listing them.
So each family doesn't get something like they sometimes do in a, I don't want to speak for you.
No, I can say it. I mean, my question or concern was around equity for families that maybe couldn't afford to participate going, you know, coming out of a senior, going into college. And if it runs into some graduation events, have a place where you can say, congratulations, you know, child's name. We're so proud of you, best of luck at blah, blah, blah university, whatever they choose to put in their, you know, one-sentence phrase there. And that can create a sentiment for those who can't, whose families can't afford to do it. So I was trying to understand, is it a message or is it simply my name is listed? You know, my family name is listed?
It'll just be the family name, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, then if there's no other discussion, and Jackie, she, she was trying to log on, she was having trouble. Okay, that's fine. All right. Okay, so then I will make a motion to approve on the banner list Healthy Smiles Dental, Primary Colors, which is the photographer, and for the OA 2025 banner, family sponsors. Can I get a second?
Second to Luca.
And all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all right, great. I'm so glad you were able to join. I know we're running really late, but that helped answer that question.
Thank you. I think that was really helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll come back and show the banner at some point.
Yeah. We will see it at graduation, yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
All right. Next up is the MCAS competency determination. Dr. Cabral?
Okay. I just wanted to provide an update, but I don't want to sound like the Department of Ed where I say I provide an update and there's no real information, but that's basically what's happening right now. I just wanted to get you up to date on where we're at.
Okay.
So Chrissy and I and Director Davidson met with Principal Kavanaugh, the two assistant principals at the high school, Director of Guidance, Sue Van Cuso. We have been talking about what, because competency determination and graduation requirements are two different things. The policy of the school committee right now is for graduation requirement. And it says that a student needs to pass certain courses, courses, excuse me, and pass MCAS. However, what the question being asked of us now is the state determined that MCAS was a competency determination, and they are now charging districts on their own to determine what the competency determination is going to be. So there is no policy on competency determination. So we have been discussing whether we should come up with a policy for that. The problem with that in terms of a timeline is we are most concerned with the Class of 2025. We do have a number of students, and I never, we never give names or, obviously, but we also never typically say a number of students if it's under 10 because we don't want to identify anyone. And so I will tell you, we're not gonna share a number. So that gives you an idea of how many students we're talking about that have not yet passed MCAS. There is a retake in February, so the students will be taking it. It's possible, excuse me, it's possible one or all of them could pass it, and it's a non-issue. However, it also is possible that they don't pass it. So what we've been talking about is how, first and foremost, to assist those students and what the plan is gonna be for those students, because they literally have five months left. Then the next step is going to be, how do we determine long-term? It could be the same determination, but we really want to focus on 2025 first. And in addition to 2025, we're also keeping in mind that it is retroactive. So anyone in the last 21 years who did not meet competency determination can come back to the school and ask. So we're trying to determine what would be fair as an assessment for them as well. So Mrs. Kavanaugh and her team are going to put together a process to propose. They are going to meet with the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee first, to try to vet out any questions. We are thinking that we probably should have a policy at least for the 2025 students. We don't want to make it part, we don't want to adjust the policy you already have on graduation requirement because we may be adjusting the competency determination in the future. Right now, we're just trying to problem solve for 2025 and retroactive. And if we do revisit the policy, we don't want to open up graduation requirement again. That's not necessary, so we're thinking of making competency determination a separate one. This is all new ground. There is no precedent for this whatsoever. Mrs. Pruitt and I also met with area superintendents and assistant superintendents to discuss this.
No one's figured it out.
Every district is in a different situation. They talked about their different sort of competing forces, or their school committee has a different view, or their community feels a different way. So it's really difficult to even come to a consensus. It was briefly said, like a breath, should we have some sort of regional agreement? And immediately, that was shot down because, and then superintendent started talking about their different populations. I mean, we have under 10 students. Some of the districts have, you know, maybe 100 students. And when you go retroactively, you're talking maybe 1,000 students. So it, it, it just, there is a different situation for everyone. Now, that's probably why the department is not setting a precedent. However, they're also not recommending anything. What they have said is they will provide samples. What that means is, once districts come up with policies, they will review them, and ones that they share will be samples from those districts. So basically, it's a horse, car, chicken, egg, what have you.
And they said that they would share samples, but they wouldn't recommend?
Right, it's not a recommendation, or this is what we want you to do. They're just going to share samples, which we will probably already have.
I really appreciate the leadership.
Collegially share them and share our information. So I just wanted to let you know that they are working on it. They are going to go to the policy subcommittee meeting, try to vet out questions, comments. Then they will come to the school committee. They may or may not, I'm not sure. I asked Mrs. Kavanaugh to review the timeline because with the two mandatory readings of the school committee, we really can't give guidance to the class until we have a policy. And so we're hoping, we're hoping it can be expedited, and we can get a sense and work out all the kinks if there are any in the policy subcommittee meeting. But it may, full disclosure, be asked that there is a workshop or two to try to hammer this out as soon as possible. And then, of course, we need to shift gears immediately, which we will be doing while we're waiting for these meetings, immediately shift gears to all other students because you shouldn't be a junior in high school and not know what your competency determination is. It's unacceptable, and unfortunately, we just didn't have control of it. It's a byproduct of the new law. So we are working on that as well. That's the information slash lack of information that we have at this time, but what we, the steps we have taken and what is currently in the works.
Okay. Any committee members have questions or comments?
No, thank you for the update.
One question. For, if students take, retake the exam in February, how long does it take to get results?
It's months.
Get them back in May.
Yeah, it's months.
Yeah. Okay. So not terribly helpful. Gotcha, all right. Okay. All right, next up, vote to approve the minutes. So we have regular meeting minutes from December 19th and workshop minutes from December 5th, which was the student meeting, student advisory committee. Any questions, comments, or edits on either set of minutes? And again, credit to Lynn for capturing very accurately and succinctly what was a lot of data shared at the last meeting, so. Yeah, so. I was able to read them earlier, and nothing jumped out at me, so in need of edits. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from December 19th and the workshop from December 5th. Can I get a second?
Person, a second.
And all in favor? Okay. All right, so next up, policy. So Jackie's still not on, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, so for this one, there are two policies that are listed, one for student activity accounts and one for fundraising. Oh, no?
You're skipping number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you did that on purpose.
Oh, wait, no, no, no. I, yeah, they ran together. Thank you. Okay, next up is a vote to approve policy ACA nondiscrimination and harassment based on sex, and this is the second reading. Okay.
At the December 5th meeting, the school committee asked for some legal guidance on who the point of contact should be for certain reporting. And the legal guidance that we received from your attorney said that it should be the assistant superintendent's office listed as the office for student reporting, and that the Director of Human Resources should be for employee reporting, and that there should be a link added to the bullying prevention plan and the bullying policy on the website. And so you have that policy before you for a second reading and possible vote.
So I'm seeing, as written, I see the third paragraph in the first page, the concerning students. And so it says the Title IX Coordinator and the District Title IX Coordinator is the Office of the Superintendent. Do we want that to be Office of the Assistant Superintendent?
Technically, it is the Office of the Superintendent, but you could name the Assistant Superintendent as opposed to Office of the Superintendent.
But I think the underlined part says District Title IX Coordinator, which is the Assistant Superintendent. And that's also, yeah.
But it also says...
Well, so there's, it looks like there's two. So there's one for students, and then this is for personnel. So...
I see what you're saying.
Title IX is students.
Yeah.
The underlined part confuses me a little bit, but...
And it is, yeah, I agree with Nancy. It's a little ambiguous that they're both, both paragraphs say the District Title IX Coordinator is, and then it lists two different people.
That's what I'm finding, I'm finding it confusing because they both say inquiries about Title IX or to report.
So the third paragraph is reporting concerning students, and the fourth paragraph is concerning personnel.
Okay.
Right, but they both start with the inquiries about Title IX, which would lead you to be able to ask either one about that, and then they both have the same title of District Title IX Coordinator, as opposed to having...
Because I think then they would get sent to the right person.
Well, the first one, I'm sorry, if you're talking about paragraph three and four?
Yep, yeah.
So the first one says Title, to report about Title IX, or have, if you have inquiries or you want to report for Title IX about the conduct concerning students. And then the next one, we didn't have one in there for personnel? And so that's why that one was added, and it says this, basically the same exact thing, but it says concerning personnel.
The only difference between the two is students and personnel.
The only difference between the two is that it says concerning students goes to the Office of the Superintendent, which you may want to make the District Title IX Coordin, well, why?
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, where it says the District Nine Coordinator is the Office of the Superintendent. That's actually not even grammatically correct, yeah.
Right, I know.
Is the Assistant Superintendent. Or you may want to...
Can we say the District Title IX?
Assistant Superintendent, though? I mean, it is now.
Right, it is something that they say needs to be specifically stated on who the Title IX Coordinator is.
Okay, so the assistant, so it would be, instead of Office of the, it would be Assistant.
Okay, so, so how about the District Title IX Coordinator for students?
That's what I want to...
That's what I wanted to ask. Can we put that clarification on?
Or for student, or, yeah.
But it's in the paragraph.
Concerning students.
So you mean at the end of the first sentence, for students?
Yeah, so to have it read, the district Title IX Coordinator for students is the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
48 Spooner Street, et cetera. And then the next one, the district Title IX Coordinator for personnel.
Okay.
Is the.
Is the Human Resource Director at blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Okay.
Like, I'm having a grammar issue, so somebody fix me. The, they both start with inquiries about Title IX, and I think it's meant to be like, for inquiries about Title IX, or to report the information.
Yep.
Because it's confusing me that they, okay.
What do you want to do?
I want, for, instead of starting with inquiries, right, for inquiries about Title IX, or to report, blah, blah, blah. So just make the "I" lowercase and put the word "for" in front of it, F-O-R, at the beginning of each of those paragraphs.
Yeah, no, I got it, I got it.
Does that make sense? Because it wasn't aligning, so I was getting confused. It didn't feel like the clarification of four students went to both of the pre-assessing statements, so.
So, and then the other, other thing you mentioned was, which I thought we did, the click, go to a place.
The link?
Link. Do we have a link?
On the website, it was, you said something about.
So is it in the policy, the link? Or is it just in the policy? I don't know where the link is. I don't, I don't know if that.
It doesn't seem from this copy of the document that there's a link activated. Well, or is it this thing here?
I don't think it's that.
No.
I don't think it's that underlined thing. That's just new.
On the website, it will be linked? This is.
All right, so it's not.
There will be a link on the website to this, or this document contains a link to something else?
This document will contain a link to the.
So that's what I'm asking. Where is the link?
To the.
Bullying?
Bullying policy and bullying prevention plan.
Where would that happen?
Yeah, where does that, that fall in here?
That should be.
I don't see it on.
Before harassment based upon sex. We can put it there.
Oh, okay, all right. So yeah, so we could, you could bury a link with that, the district's grievance, grievance procedures?
Well, it says are attached to this policy.
Okay.
I see.
But when this is electronic, that will actually be a link.
Okay, all right, so that'll be underlying. That'll have the hyperlink thing or whatever.
So it'll be a link to the grievance procedures and to the bullying policy?
Yes.
Okay. The bullying prevention plan and the bullying policy.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hey, Carol.
This is our second night together this week, Carol.
I think that there's some confusion among you all. You're talking about Title IX, not bullying.
Right.
So what, we had discussed before with this policy is, do you want to list the grieving procedures like we did with bullying? Or if you don't, then we can eliminate that line.
You make so much more sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the part with, sorry, I wasn't a panelist, so I kept trying to raise my hand, but you all were talking about.
The Office of the.
Adult and the student, yep. How, whoever, Dr. Cabral, when you started, you said the legal guidance was that for students, it should be the Office of the Assistant Superintendent, and then for adults, it should be the Office of Human Resources.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yes.
I will, I will tell you that when there is a student Title IX issue, I have to send all parents the policy, the process, the grievance process, so they're separate, and are, what's the other thing I send? I send the intake form, no, I fill out the intake form. I send the grievance process and the, the policy. Those are the two things I send to parents. So the grievance process doesn't necessarily have to be a part of the, the actual policy, because it is a, it's a process that I send along with the policy.
But that's the question. Do they want it there so people can see what it is before they contact? I don't, I don't know that it's necessary, but they.
So they understand what they're getting into?
It could be. Because we did it with bullying. Policy.
Yep.
We did it with bullying because it was mandated. It's mandated by the law that we list the procedure. That's not, well, I don't think it is.
Mandated for them.
Sorry, yes.
For the policy, right.
So in our, in our policy manual, if we leave this sentence here that the district's grievance procedures are attached to this policy, a copy of which can be found at the Office of the Superintendent. So, you know, nobody's sitting around with a hard copy of this in their house, except for us, but, but it, so somebody, you know, if you're looking this up, you're looking this up online, and so you're going through the PDF, and the next page following this is the grievance.
Procedure, if you want it, or you can delete that sentence.
Oh, okay. I mean, I think it would make, right? It makes it easier for people to find what they need?
Yeah, it is something that, that families don't understand the process, nor would they, right? There's no, it's a very comprehensive process that if, and it's something that I do send home. So if it is attached to it, or if it's a link to it, it would be advantageous, in my opinion, to have it there for parents to see, so that they can see, if they want to file Title IX, what the process actually entails.
I don't see a harm in it.
Yeah, once I start going through the process, they, they recognize how complex it is.
Okay, and then we can just follow whatever was done in the bullying policy in terms of like, you know, naming the file that gets, you know, put at the back of this. Okay, all right, that makes sense to me.
And then I just have one more thing. At the end, the last page, we should have a revised and an adopted, or, we need the dates. I don't know where the dates went on this. Because this isn't a new policy, so.
Yes, this is, this one is, remember, as of August 1, this was the brand-new document that we got from the attorneys when Title changed. So this will replace the old Title IX policy that we.
So 8/1/24, and then if we vote on it tonight, we put 1/9/25, correct?
Yeah, adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and not to beat, beat this to death, but, so back to paragraph three. So the district Title IX Coordinator for students is, and I heard, I heard, Carol, you say the Office of the, and it was either Assistant Superintendent or Superintendent, and then you also use that phrasing for human resources, the Office of Human Resources. The way this is written now, one of the first paragraph references Office and says Superintendent.
No, we, I'm sorry, we got rid of Office of the and put Assistant there.
Okay, so Carol, do you agree with that? Because you, I, you, you definitely said Office of for both of those. I just didn't know if you had a.
I did, only because we, we've been trying to stay consistent. So as long as it's Assistant Superintendent, and then not name the person, then we don't have to go back and revise policies.
Okay, so you're, so you're comfortable with Assistant Superintendent, and then for the second one, Human Resources Director? Should be Director of Human Resources, or Director of Human Resources, okay. All right. Anything else?
I'm here? I don't think so.
No, this one.
All right, so do we want to see this again and vote? Or are we comfortable making it? Yeah, or we can take a vote to.
It's up to you guys.
Approve it with noted edits.
If you want to see it again, you could do it at the next meeting, right?
Okay. But I'm comfortable, if you think, if you're comfortable sort of being in charge of kind of peer reviewing it when it comes back to make sure it captures everything we intended, I'm comfortable with voting it with noted edits.
Okay.
And if it's, yeah, if it doesn't meet expectations, we'll see it again.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, all right, then. So I will make a motion to approve policy ACA nondiscrimination and harassment based on sex with noted edits. Can I get a second?
Do you second it? DeLuca second. I thought, I thought I heard you.
All in favor? Okay, all right.
Started to, and then.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, next up, so we have a slew of policies, and it's, it's very late. So let's see what makes sense to address tonight, and what makes, may make sense to put off, especially when, when Jackie's here.
I would ask that J-J-F and J-J-E dash E, the student activity and fundraising policies be tabled, because those involve the Finance Director, and she's unable to be here at the same time.
Okay, yep. All right, so we can do, we'll do a vote to table those plus any others that, so I guess looking through Nancy and Carol's, are there any here that you think require, you know, a significant discussion, or that you'd rather wait until Jackie's available? Or are these ones where they are?
This, just so, just to note, this isn't for a vote? Yeah, it's a first reading, okay.
Yep, yep. So I just, you know, if any of these you think require a substantive discussion that's best not had at 9:30 PM, we can, we can certainly entertain pushing them back. But if they're just, you know, first readings, and you want to point out what we're thinking about and observations, et cetera, then I think we can plow through, so.
I think we can table J-I-C-F-A-dash-E hazing.
Okay.
And J-I-C-H-dash-R, admin guidelines, and alcohol, on alcohol and drugs.
Okay.
Because we are still waiting for feedback from the Athletic Director and Nurse Coordinator.
Okay.
And they are, they set up a meeting today, so, or for, I don't know when the meeting is, but I know they were.
Yeah, they're working on it separately, together.
Okay.
And I think all, if I'm not mistaken, all the other ones pretty much, we were okay with everything, I feel like.
All right, well, then let's, I'll, I'll motion to table J-I-C-F-A-dash-E, J-I-C-dash, J-I-C-H-dash-R, J-J-F, and J-J-E slash J-J-E-dash-E to a future meeting. Can I get a second?
First, you have a second.
And all in favor? Okay, all right, so that leaves us then with, in the order that we have them, J-F-B-B, School Choice, I want to start there. Or, you know, Carol, if there's an order that you wanted to go through. Okay, all right. So Nancy, Carol's, any?
I feel like School Choice was, I don't remember, I didn't bring that.
That, that one is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
It's the same procedure that you all have been doing.
Okay, so nothing was changed?
Nope, that one's looking for a just, can't, I can't remember the term that Jackie used, but we're just like changing the date to make sure that.
It's review.
Yeah, sort of like a reviewed, okay.
But I don't think that was one that she was going to check legal on, right? Like, she, she was going to go to the book, okay.
All right, so we can plan to see a second reading of that, okay, all right.
And then the next two, I believe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't these the brand-new ones? This is foster care and military, military children. Aren't these the brand-new ones from the state?
No, that, but those will require a conversation because of the time that there was an outside consultant looking at the policies. It seems like in one copy, one of those policies was in the policy manual, and then in some other version, it wasn't. So I mean, it's going to require conversation, for sure.
So. Okay, so this one, you're saying was, was in one version of the manual, but not? Okay, and we don't have any recollection as to maybe if it was an administrative oversight or deliberate choice? Yeah, no, I was around for this. All right, so we may have some notes on these.
Yeah, I was going to.
Yeah, yeah, we were around for this, Nancy. Okay.
I probably have the original one in my notebook.
I do.
I'll find it.
I have a hard copy somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, so any, so, but in terms of content themselves, were there any recommendations?
I don't think so.
Not for the, not for that policy.
So are you suggesting tabling J-F-A-B-F and J-F-A-B-E?
Sorry, I'm going back and forth from different pages.
Sorry, foster care and military children?
Foster, yes, we can table it for.
And military children? You're, you're waiting to seek guidance of whether they should be included?
No, they def, they should be included.
Okay.
They, yes, they should be included, and.
The military.
The military one, there's nothing to change. You can take a look at it.
Okay. So you're looking to include them. You're not looking to change any language or anything? So there's not substantive discussion about the content? It's about, these should be included, is your point?
Correct, for the military policy.
Okay, what about the foster children, foster care, excuse me?
That one had, we had some changes. We talked about migrant students.
Oh, okay.
So that one will require conversation.
Okay, all right, so we'll, so we'll table this one until Jackie's here, and we have some time to dig through. I got you.
So we're tabling foster care. But J-F-A-B-E is ready for a second reading and possible vote?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we can, we'll vote J-F-A-B-F separately, so we'll just set that aside for now to the table. Okay, all right. J-I-A, pupil rights amendment? This is the P-P-R-A. And was this just to, just to kind of review and affirm? Or were there any suggested changes?
I believe it was review and affirm, correct?
Correct, yep.
So that is ready for a second reading?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and then J-I-C-F. Sorry, I did get a chuckle out of this one. The, the gang activity secret societies.
So while, yes, we did laugh as well.
It's important to have it, right?
It, I don't know. Only because if you look at the language, and I'm trying to scroll and look for it, where it talks about like, oh, here it is. Where it talks about fraternity sororities and our secret societies. We talked about our National Honor Society, and how like that doesn't make sense, but kind of conflicts, so.
Well, it's not a secret society, I guess.
No, but it is, would it be, I don't know. Would it be considered fraternity? Definitely not secret. I don't know.
Sorry, where's the fraternity piece? Oh, down here.
I'm not sure of the need for the policy. I don't know the origin of it. I don't know if there was like, and I'm not trying to be slick, but.
I think when we talked about it, we said.
Well, this is, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, these are recommended by MASK. So they're, it's not necessarily unique to Easton. No, these are recommended by mask, so they're, it's not necessarily unique to Easton, and so when they did their review, they would have added any that were used across the state of Massachusetts, so, um, they, it would be more salient probably to different environments, but I don't think it's a bad thing to have as a policy because they exist in the world.
Yeah.
It makes it more comprehensive. I don't know that it needs to be called a secret society, but I'm not a, I'm not an attorney or a policy writer, um, I guess that is what they're called, I don't know.
But I, I feel like this was one that we said, we didn't, the three of us didn't know what to do, and we said, let's put it to the school committee and to see what they think.
It just reminds me, one of the handbooks had a dress code that referenced like gang colors.
Yes, and chains and.
Wait until there is a secret society and then people are like, well, you don't have it in your policy.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
That we are able to laugh about that, right? I mean, we're very fortunate.
Yeah, it is an issue, it is an issue in some places, so.
Can we confirm this is still a state?
Heather.
I guess my perspective on it would be, can we confirm this is still recommended by mask and that the terminology is still correct?
Okay.
Like, I just, I think that, like, it feels potentially dated.
Yeah, feels very anarchistic.
And so, like, I feel like maybe we could refresh what the intent of this is.
So, yep.
I would agree because I don't, yeah, I don't know what prevention education we have going on to prevent gang activity or secret societies. So, if we're going to keep the policy, then I would suggest bringing it to our current environment.
Or saying, or, or leaving the opportunity to say, if determined, necessary.
Yes, if, if a need arises.
Et cetera.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I think we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe just.
Just looking quickly at the M A S C site, other districts do have this as their, in their policy.
Okay, and it is termed this way?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess then, if that is consistent, then we would just want to update that piece of language at the minimum to say if it's determined necessarily. We don't, we don't address the gang violence prevention at the bottom.
I can, and this may sound silly, but I can see something like a secret society in, in the elementary grades.
Oh, boy.
Of like, you know, nothing formal, obviously, but like kids saying, oh, you can't come because this is just.
A clique.
Yeah, like.
Yes, it does happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I, I agree.
That doesn't rise to being expelled.
So I think that's where we need to look at this language because right now, the prevention is around gangs specifically, as opposed to some other things which Carol's may be able to tell us is covered through other policies we have for like that type of behavior.
And I don't believe that we can, that's one of the three reasons to suspend or, I mean, to expel a student.
But it's not saying.
A student may be suspended or suspended.
May, may.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have.
For fear of.
Not bill.
No, no, I know, I know.
Yeah, but we don't have that.
I feel like that sentence should go above where it says secret societies, I think secret societies is just making the, I'm sorry, I.
Can we just?
Yeah. I'm sorry that, that I'm making people laugh, I'm just.
No, I'm, I'm laughing, the reason I'm laughing is that I feel like we just need to reread and edit the whole thing because it's just, yeah, that's why I was laughing was that we were all like, wait, but this line, this line.
There are some, but not all, that have it, some but not all.
Okay.
I'm telling other districts that don't have it.
I just recommend we table it.
Okay, all right, we'll put that in the table file.
Sort of.
Yes.
I'm not sure there's a lot of value added in continuing to talk about it right this minute.
Yes, I don't think we can edit it properly.
Okay, okay, and then we, we already voted to table hazing and drug and alcohol. Weapons, so it looks like there's some updates here to, to a potential criminal punishment and, and an update to, from D S S to D C F.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I know there are a couple of small typos.
I know.
In this one, so Nancy, I trust you'll get them.
We will.
Okay. Any other discussion or recommendation on this?
Um, I guess I'll, I'll ask, um, is there any language that needs to be incorporated or that other school districts are incorporating around things that are intentionally made to appear to be a gun but are not? That has been something that has come up in some areas where they are intentionally giving the impression that they are carrying a gun, however, it turns out not to be an actual firearm, so I don't know.
Hmm.
I just, I don't know if that needs to be considered because it is often deemed just as threatening.
Then we'll, why don't we table this and then we'll discuss it and then bring it back to you.
Okay, all right.
What was the question? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Kelly.
No, that's fine, I probably didn't speak clearly. The question was, are other districts, or is there recommended language around products that are intentionally carried that appear to be a firearm or weapon? Because right now, that is becoming more of an issue where something appears to be a weapon is not actually able to discharge, but by all intents and purposes, anyone around would think that it wasn't actually a weapon. This doesn't, I think, address that.
It doesn't, but this is talking about that they're subject to expulsion? Do you, I, I don't believe that something that mimics or looks like a weapon falls under 37 H, Carol's, do you know if that's correct?
It does.
It does not, it's weapons, so there is a, there is, uh, I can't even find my words, it's so late, I'm sorry, 37 H, 37 H and a half, 37 three quarters, they are about drugs, alcohol, weapons, federal offenses, and they're subject to expulsion. This references being subject to expulsion? I hear what you're saying, but this is saying that students can be expelled for having a firearm on property. Per the law, a student can't be expelled for having something that looks like a weapon, even if it causes distress, or, I mean, it would be action.
That was my question, I was asking, that was my question.
It would definitely be action, yeah.
That's, that's exactly the clarification I was seeking, is do, did that need to be incorporated, is there a legal consideration? I was just, we had last updated this a little while ago, so.
No, it's a good question.
That was, that was the exact question I was asking, so thank you.
Would, would chapter 37 H be an appropriate legal reference to add? Because we, does it make sense to?
Explain the legal.
Kind of tie the two? Yeah. Or.
Would we put it here because it, there are other, we just, we're going to have to be consistent because it also is about drugs.
Right.
And.
Drug and alcohol, yeah, the drug and alcohol, one doesn't reference it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is, it is referenced under J I I.
Hmm.
Um.
Yes.
But we would, I don't think it's referenced under the drugs.
But we have to come back to that one.
Yeah.
So maybe it would be once we, right, we just table that one.
No, we did.
Okay.
All right, yeah, it's not under drugs.
Okay.
It's not, I'm sorry, it's not under J I C H dash R as a legal reference.
Okay, all right, so are we then comfortable with this one moving to a second reading?
Which one?
Uh, J I C I?
Oh, J, no.
Weapons.
No?
No.
We definitely want a table for further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, J I E, pregnant students?
That one was just a review.
Okay. I have to say, this one, I was very touched by how, how caring this policy is, it's just one of those policies that truly has the best interest of students at heart, I mean, as all of them do, but just the wording just really stood out to me, it's like, great, like, it's just about keeping kids in school and doing the best we can with them and.
Right.
No judgment and it's just, yeah, it's nicely written. Okay.
The only thing that might need to be changed there is the Title IX legal reference, I'm not sure if that's the current citing, but once, once they go to legal, they'll figure it out.
Okay, all right, so this one, we can move to a second reading and just note legal reference. Okay. And then student complaints and complaints and grievances, J I I.
That's not, I think that's it, right, for tonight?
J I I. Student complaints and grievances is the last one.
Yep.
Oh.
It doesn't look like there are any red lines on this one.
I think it was just to read it over.
It references what to do in a grievance?
Yes, yep. Okay, all right, so we can move this to second, so we, let's see, the last, last two we had already tabled, all right, so just want to vote on then tabling for future discussion, make a motion to also table J F A B F, J I C F, in no particular order at this point, J I C I, J I C F A dash E, and J I C H dash R. Can I get a second?
DeLuca second.
And all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Carol's.
Thank you, Carol's.
Okay, all right, next up, Marvel's not on, okay, so, let's see, so we have no, no update from our student representative this evening, so we will catch up with her next time. Schedule of payment, since the school committee last met, we closed out warrant 032 S, which was for routine operating expenses.
Did we ever get that other warrant?
No.
Okay.
Which we could follow, 034, there was a follow-up, like a request for follow-up on it, but we had never received it, which I let Lynn know.
You requested Andrea, of Andrea?
No, Lynn, yeah, Lynn had made sure we signed it on behalf of the office and we had not actually seen it.
Got it.
So we let her know that, but.
Thank you.
All right, public comments, nobody is here, superintendent notes?
I'm going to greatly amend this, let's see, um.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing that can't wait.
Okay, assistant superintendent notes? Just quickly going to let you know that we are starting to look at the calendar for, for next school year, so the first reading will be, we are hoping to be at the next school committee meeting.
Thank you.
People will be very excited.
Yes.
Yes.
Eagerly awaiting. All right, school committee notes, Kelly?
I don't have any.
Okay, Nancy?
Couple things, attended the January 4th first event at Stonehill, was very well attended, Jen was there.
Yep.
And, well, I saw you, I don't know if anybody else, but anyway, it was fun, it was a good takeoff, plus you've probably noticed around town that the flags on the telephone poles have gone up and those are, you can still get one, they're $300, they, you can, you know, whatever, business name, your name, whatever. The next 300th event is April 26th, which is, seems a way off, but it's the Art and Cultural Festival.
There's actually one sooner.
Is there one?
At Langwater, and I don't know the date, but it's not considered a signature one.
Oh, it's not the signature, yeah, that's, yeah, I knew there's something like every month, but, okay.
That's great.
Also, just today is a day of mourning for President Jimmy Carter, 100 years old, and, you know, he was Jimmy, the peanut farmer from Georgia, and my heart goes out to the people in California, so just hope everybody's okay.
I just received a message, the Hollywood sign is not broken.
Yep, well, I have a picture of it from last Thursday.
Oh.
Friday, last Friday.
Yes.
We were there.
Oh, that's right, you were, yes.
So that's why, you know, you, you see something happen on the news, you're like, oh, yeah, there's, that's going on, that's going on. A week ago today, we were, we drove into Malibu and now it's just, you know, so, anyway, I mean, everybody's got a story and a lot of people out there are just, I don't know, I can't imagine.
I agree with you completely and I'm glad you said something, and I also, my heart goes out to all the, the local community members who are impacted by it and worrying about family members in that situation.
I know.
I've spent the better part of my day on the phone in California who are evacuating.
Yep.
Through my work, so I.
And, yeah, and they've never had, like, it's just kind of the perfect storm with the wind and the wind and the hills and the, and it's such a beautiful part of the, it really is beautiful and just to watch it on the news, like watching Carrick, you can't take your eyes off it.
It actually creates its own weather system.
Oh, it did, absolutely.
It's generating this, it's actually generating.
And they don't know when another fire will start up again and it's just, it's awful.
There are people just sitting with their bags packed waiting to go.
Yeah.
They're expecting to be jumped.
And firefighters that are putting their lives out there with no water.
Yep.
They ran out of water.
Yep, there was a thing today, they, you know how you have your trash barrel, people were going to neighbors' houses and taking those trash barrels to the, from the pool so that they could save whatever wasn't burning at the time, like, meanwhile, there's a house over here burning and they're trying to save this house, it's just, but anyway, my heart goes out to them.
It's in perspective for sure.
It really does, absolutely.
Lauren, any comments this week?
Um, I will say that last night, the, and I'm sure Jen will talk about it, but the PACE event was extremely successful and I, I definitely learned a lot and I have seen commentary from other people today that, that other people, eyes were opened to things that they did not realize about the town's finances, finances and the trajectory of, of what is ahead, so that was great. I also would like to, just really quick, the, yesterday was a late start for OA, and I totally understand and respect it and, and agree the benefits it has for OA, but the traffic situation during the same time that RO is starting school is a huge traffic hazard and we, we need to come up with a solution to not have an accident happen. It is really scary driving your child and people, and overload of cars and it's not a, it's, it's not a clean flow of traffic, it, it's backing up, it's backing up into spots when you're not expecting it, and it's, it's, it's just the wild, wild west. And I don't necessarily, although saying that families could put their child on the bus and that would save a lot of traffic, I, I, I agree, but I don't think that that's realistic and practical to, to put that on families, so I don't know what the solution is, but I think we need to brainstorm and come up with one for next year and for the rest of the school year.
For next month.
For next month, yeah, but definitely if, you know, it's, it's a great program, so it's, I don't foresee it going away, so whatever we can do to keep our families safe.
So I just want you to know that Ms. Kavanaugh is well aware of that and she does have an ongoing committee for scheduling for next year. Officer Aker has been out at every late start except this week because he was responding to an incident. We have contacted the police department about details, but there are not available officers, and so he, I spoke to him personally and he will be at the rest of them, obviously we don't know when there's going to be an emergency, but it is his priority to be there for all of them.
Obviously, we don't know when there's gonna be an emergency, but it is his priority to be there for all of them. And as I said, the high school is continuing to work on solutions.
Did, did he say where he would be?
Where he has been is at the intersection.
At the RO entrance.
Yes.
But that's not for me and from what I've seen and what I've heard, that's not where the issues are. The issues are coming from Randall down Lothrup.
I think that parents who are not used to coming that way are not expecting the high schoolers to pull in and do the back end that they do when you say that, and if you have driven your high schooler there, you know to anticipate that. Um, and that's probably part of the issue, I think, in the past, it, one of the prior notices said like, high school, please go that way so that you're not disrupting RO, which means we're actually increasing the traffic flow on Randall, and so we may need to say like, RO parents can just go the other way. Because the high schooler, and they do, they like, they all know their system. And they like wait for each other and they back up and they do this whole thing and you just have to prepare for it. Um, and it's safer for them pulling out to have backed in. Um, and then they all sit in their parked car until the two minutes beforehand they walk in to the other mass. So it's a whole thing, but you guys don't know to expect that, so we've got to figure out how to communicate that to the students. Because I totally get it, the first time I drove through the high school dropping off my freshmen, I was like, oh dear lord, now I've got it. So, it just takes a little, yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, has the, I, I, I do recall Mrs. Kavanaugh, um, uh, encouraging the students and the OA families who drop off to use Randall to Lothrup. But what, yeah, was there parallel communication to RO to basically avoid that? Go, go up Sheridan Street and kind of come up Lothrup Street and go around that, like, that part of Lothrup Street by the police station and you can potentially avoid. Yeah, all right, so that might be a, a kind of a, a simple.
The backup goes all the way down to Summer.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, it's the.
Like, the turn onto Summer, not just.
That's every morning to the high school.
Yeah, that's true.
That is every morning to the high school if you're too close to the start time, every single morning. So that's not abnormal, it's just unfortunately probably getting even worse because you're telling everyone to go that way, to avoid the RO side. So I think there's a parallel communication opportunity.
Yeah, you could come down, if you were coming from that end of town, you could come down Lincoln instead of Randall, or you could come up Center and then up, up Sheridan, yeah, that way, yeah.
There may be, um, an opportunity to, to come up with another incentivize for those students who are driving to come in early. And not at the same time as RO. So, like, the younger grades are getting their dunks or Starbucks or whatever, and they are incentivized to go into the cafeteria fifteen minutes early and catch up. Principal Kavanaugh's done an amazing job of setting up like places to socialize, so you come early, so they want to go early. But for those who are driving, they can just sit in their car and hang out, or they can just come in towards the last minute. So it probably is getting closer to the RO time, but if those who drove got a donut or whatever, they might be more incentivized to come in and get it that way. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to get them.
Versus sleep, I think, would be difficult, but I.
Highly motivated by caffeine.
We had an omelet bar, uh, and they said, mm, I want to sleep. But, but I hear you.
I hear you.
We hear each other.
A Starbucks raffle might be, alternative gift card.
And I know that Mr. Getchell, um, did and has delayed attendance, which is great. But, um, I, I, I think that, you know, and I, I believe he's gonna communicate that he's gonna do that moving forward.
Notes about the PACE event, so thank you to everybody who came out last night. Um, as, as mentioned before, there's, it's a nineteen person committee, everybody had a role last night. Um, and some members of the committee volunteered to take on a larger role. I got to just show up and talk to people, but other people, um, designed graphics and, and, um, and the, the town offices, we had to coordinate, picking up easels and dropping them off and ordering refreshments, and so there was a lot that went into it. I'm very, very pleased with the turnout. Uh, I don't know if we had an estimate of how many people there, but one of the rooms upstairs was used for a presentation and at the presentation time it was standing room only. Um, and then we had a steady stream of visitors mingling through all three of the, uh, sort of the, the breakout rooms that we had um, downstairs all night long. It was a, a steady, a nice steady stream of people and, um, almost everybody I spoke to was somebody I didn't know, so that was really, really great.
Were a lot of new faces, that was great.
Yeah, yeah, people who had moved to town only in the past couple of years, people who've been here for decades, but I just, you know, I just haven't seen them, we haven't crossed paths yet, so hopefully the word is getting out and there'll be more, um, more communications, more events, they're pushing, um, uh, there's a lot of information on the town website and a Facebook page that's pushing out a lot of information in, in little nuggets, so anybody watching, uh, please, uh, find the PACE, P A S E on social media or read the Town Crier or find it on the website, but there's a lot of info and look for us at various events, meetings, and if you have a group who you think would be interested in hearing about, um, some of the town's, um, budget woes and, and, and what we're dealing with and, um, would like to get a group together, um, the contact info for the PACE, uh, chairs is on, or chair, co-chair on the, um, the website and they, they would be happy to schedule something, so.
I did see, um, a lot of social media activity on it, I think if the group was so willing, it sounds like there might be people who are interested in going if there was another session. They have a little FOMO now of what they learned that others heard about, so another session hopefully on a vigorous cross warmer day.
Yep.
Might motivate some more folks to come out.
Yep, and then I think, I believe there's plans for partnering with ECAT, thank you ECAT for everything, um, to, uh, to have Tom and Nancy do a presentation. We didn't record last night because they wanted to make sure that people would be comfortable asking questions and they're not always if there's a camera on. And then also the, probably the audio video in, in a room like that wouldn't have been great, so this will give the, them a chance to do something in the studio with good audio and visual and then something that we can share out and bring to other presentations or meetings that we might be at or small groups, uh, throughout town so that Tom and Nancy don't have to clone themselves, um, to, uh, to get the word out, so.
I, I thought the, the posters and the graphics and everything that were done were really impactful and they brought really good points to write, you know, in someone's face to, to really, um, see the impact, like the, did you know, and it was all these fun facts. Maybe not fun, but facts. And, um, I thought they were great.
Yeah.
Whoever did it did a great job.
Do you want to give a shout out? We know, it was, it was, that was Cathy Millet, right?
Designed by Cathy Millet, yep.
Yep, yep, so Cathy Millet at EMS, thank you, fabulous job and I heard the same thing, they were, yeah, people kind of were like, oh, that, that looks really great. Yeah, it does, and it tells you things, so, very effective. Okay, anything else? No, all right, so with that, our next meeting is the
Twenty third at six P M.
Six P M, all right, so, two Thursdays from now, uh, we will be back. With that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Marcy.
Can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
And all in favor? All right, goodnight, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.